Meeting for Wednesday, November thirteenth. We had a brief recess and we are reconvening at eight fifty-five P. M. We are now moving to item seven point two in business. Twenty twenty-five fees by law number twenty-four dash twenty-five. Good evening, Riley.
Good evening, your worship and members of council. At last week's regular council meeting, we held first and second reading of the proposed twenty twenty-five fees and charges by law in the agenda package. In second reading, council directed administration to bring back options for monthly all access passes, as well as a proposed reduction to the all access pass. Specifically, council had asked administration to examine or discuss reducing the annual all access pass to one thousand two hundred dollars annually, include a monthly payment option for it and a nine-month payment option for the all access pass. Marcy Mansbridge is our manager of recreation and culture, and she has prepared a presentation to discuss our overall recreation fee structure and monthly payment options to address council's direction. After her presentation, we will field questions from council specific to those recreation areas, and I will also review with you if there are any other specific changes you wanted to see to any other areas of the fees by law before we return it for a third reading at next week's regular council meeting. And with that, I will pass the mic to Marcy.
Good evening, Marcy.
Good evening, your worship and council. I'm going to be addressing some of the questions brought up at last Wednesday's council meeting relating to the recreation all access membership. As you're aware, last year, we introduced additional membership options at council's request. So in twenty twenty-three, the only membership, all access membership option was the annual rate. As I mentioned, at council's request, we had the addition of the ten-time pass, thirty-time pass, one month, three month, and six month in addition to the already existing annual. One thing that I want to bring up is in twenty twenty-three, the family annual all access membership was only twelve dollars more than the sports center family annual membership. Considering this, it was determined a more significant increase was needed to better align the value of the all access membership. And this is in part what prompted the development of an overarching fee structure. All right, I'm gonna attempt to explain the rationale behind the fee strategy here. If you focus on the areas in green, that will better assist in what I'm attempting to explain here. So the all access membership prices are all based off of the one-month membership. So the one-month all access membership was created or calculated by taking all three facilities, one-month membership price divided by two. So essentially, a fifty percent discount, which is essentially receiving all three facilities for the price of one point five, one and a half facilities. So if we can understand that it all starts at that one-month membership, then if you're looking at the bottom there in green, then we can understand how the rest of the membership options are derived. So the three-month membership is the equivalent to two point two five one-month memberships. So this pricing model, the more a patron is willing to purchase, the higher the discount. So in this instance, the three-month membership, that equals a twenty-five percent discount. When we move to the six-month membership, that is the equivalent of purchasing three point six one-month passes. So that equates to a forty percent savings there. The annual is going to be your highest amount of discount. That's a fifty percent discount, and that is the equivalent of purchasing six individual one-month memberships. So if we move to the green column on the right-hand side, there's also in this fee structure rationale between the individual categories, age categories. So for instance, if you, it's all compared to the adult rate. So if you take, for instance, the senior and the youth rate, that no matter what facility you're looking at, if you're looking at your all access rates or the sports center fees or the aquatic fees, the senior and youth rate are going to be seventy-five percent of what the adult rate is, which is a twenty-five percent discount. The child rate is going to be fifty percent of what the adult rate is, and so on and so forth. I'm gonna back up. One thing that was mentioned by council last Wednesday was wanting to see the addition of a nine-month membership. The column in orange outlined here has numbers generated that would, I guess, kind of coincide with this existing fee structure. And these prices are at a forty-five percent discount, which would equal four point eight one-month memberships. Although we have the nine-month option listed there, it is not something that administration would recommend at this time. There are a few reasons for that. Ultimately, the nine-month option can be achieved by purchasing a six-month and a three-month. That can happen in one transaction, so there's no inconvenience to the client. And those memberships can be stacked, meaning that there's no responsibility on the patron to activate one. As one expires, the next would automatically activate. Council has asked for information surrounding possibly introducing a continuous monthly membership. If implemented, a continuous monthly membership would operate similar to a subscription model, where the client is automatically billed on a reoccurring monthly basis. Unlike a one-time payment, which is our current model, this model would require the user to sign up and agree to a monthly payment plan that continues until the customer decides to cancel it. So our information that we've gathered here is all very preliminary. One thing that I want to point out is that we've had discussions with our recreation software, Explorer Recreation, and very preliminary conversations. And ultimately, the functionality is there to be able to offer this model. However, something I want to point out is further time and discussions would be needed with our finance department to go over other potential financial implications. Some items I have here that we would want to explore is our current software charges per transaction. So if we're moving, if we're allowing a monthly continuous option where the credit card is being charged monthly, that could have implications and higher charges, something we would want to explore. There would need to be operational, I guess, ongoing management options explored. There's, there would be more requirements for staff, managing cancellations, updating payment information as credit cards. You know, with the one-time payment, the transaction either goes through or it doesn't. There may be instances where, you know, we're now tracking down money if a card is no longer valid. Something else we would need to consider is addressing fee increases. If council wishes to introduce a fee increase yearly, how we would manage that. Something else I wanted to point out is for the information we've looked into other communities that offer this, typically what we see is they don't offer the same number. They offer a reduced rate, typically a pass, a ten-pass, and the continuous monthly. They don't have the number of options that we have. This slide shows a few different facilities who've moved to wards or have the continuous monthly option available. So for the first two, Airjury, Genesis Place, and in Drumheller, you can see, as I mentioned before, how the, a lot of communities who go this way with their rec facilities have reduced options. These two facilities have a ten-pass option in the continuous monthly, which has replaced the need for the additional options. Whereas the last example there, Spruce Grove, it's kind of a hybrid model where they have both. I'm just gonna scroll back to slide three here. Last Wednesday, I believe part of the motion was exploring what the family all access pass, reducing that to twelve hundred, what that would look like. I don't have those numbers here today. What I wanted to try and communicate is that this fee strategy, we would need to give more thought, consideration, as opposed to just targeting one specific fee. What implications that would mean? So for instance, if we had dropped the family all access fee to twelve hundred, the sports center annual fee is twelve fifty-two. So it doesn't, yeah, it would not work. It would not work with this existing fee structure to pluck out one specific price. And I'm open to any questions any of you may have.
Thank you, Marcy. Did you, did you folks notice a reduction in the all, all access pass, family pass? Did you see any changes between twenty-three and twenty-four so far? Yeah, I just wanna.
Yes, your worship, as we indicated last week, we did see a reduction, but that was year-to-date. We typically see an increased activation or increased purchase in this last quarter of the year as families, as individuals try to get a savings on a one-year membership before any fee increases do happen. So unfortunately, we don't have year-end to date, but, sorry, we have year-to-date, but not for the rest of the fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Montgomery?
Thank you. I spent a bit of time thinking about this. And so I'd like to offer a couple of suggestions, and I would like to see this come before council as an option to vote on, please. So one, one option that I'd like, or one thing that I would like to see is, I'd like to actually get rid of the different passes. I would like, I think we should only have an all access pass. You know, I noticed that, you know, a couple of our facilities are a bit less than twelve hundred for a year pass for a family. And then, you know, you mentioned the one that's more. So I think we can actually save a bit of trouble by just consolidating all the passes. Somebody isn't getting like, you know, somebody isn't really getting, you know. So I guess I'll talk again about value. And, you know, we could have three different facilities or four different facilities or five. Let's say we have five different facilities, and let's say a year pass for a single person is a thousand dollars each. You know, they're not getting five thousand dollars worth of value out of, you know, those, out of a pass, because they're only one person and they can only be at one facility at a time. And so it's, it's not necessarily accurate to look at it, I think, from the perspective of like how much, you know, how many facilities could, you know, could they access? And therefore, you know, it's some multiple of that or something like that. So I think it would be a lot cleaner and simpler just to get rid of the other pass, the other facility passes and just go with the all access pass. And I believe, so as I mentioned before, we went from a thousand dollars, like it was just over, I think it was a thousand fifteen or something like that, up to fifteen hundred dollars in one year, you know? That's almost a fifty percent increase. And we, as I mentioned before, I believe we've priced ourselves out of the reach of many people in town. And when I go into the facilities, for instance, you know, I was in the sports center, I don't know, last week or like before, something like that on the weekend, and it was quite dead. And while that's, you know, that's great for me and my kids, because we have, you know, free rein of the place. I didn't feel good about, you know, seeing it empty that way. I would rather we were super busy. And then, like, we have to also consider, like, just as far as value goes. You know, when I look at, you know, the number of times somebody would have to use a pass, that's kind of how I look at it. How many times does somebody have to use a pass in order to, you know, make it worth their while, essentially? And that's where I came up actually with the nine-month pass, because what I've noticed with my own family and I've talked to other families, and I've noticed through reports on the usage of our facilities, is that in the summer months, we go through kind of a low period, and because people are on vacation, they're out of town, they're doing other things, they're enjoying, you know, the outdoors. So they're, 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 they're not, having an annual pass actually isn't really providing them, you know, the best value. And so that's why I suggested we have a nine-month pass, because and it doesn't really do anybody any good to combine, you know, a three-month pass and a six-month pass, because like the idea of a nine-month pass is to, you know, make, you know, get some sort of, you know, savings compared to a year, an annual pass. And to save sixteen dollars by having to stack, you know, a couple of different passes is not really kind of worthwhile. Our goal should be to sell as many passes as possible, to keep the facilities as busy as possible, without, of course, you know, incurring higher overhead that's not going to be, you know, kind of covered, let's say. So I'm not, I'm not interested in increasing the amount of money we lose. I fully believe that if we actually, you know, and that's why I asked last year to add different options, because, you know, if somebody wants to come to our town and they're only here for a month, you know, let them buy a month pass, you know? Why should we only say, well, tough luck, buddy, you gotta buy a year pass, you know, or you gotta buy six months or something? Somebody wants to use, you know, the facility a few times, let them buy a ten-pass. So that's, that's, you know, there's, there's good reason to have a variety of passes. And, you know, we're here to serve the customers, we're here to serve the residents. And so whatever we need to do to kind of tailor ourselves to their needs and their desires, that's what we should be doing. I, so I guess for the next meeting, as I mentioned, I would like to see an option where we've just cut down to just the all access pass. The annual fee should be twelve hundred dollars to start with. The passes that are, you know, one month, three months, six months, nine months should be relatively close to the prorated amount that somebody would, you know, get for a year. Obviously, you know, it could be, I don't know, let's say ten percent higher or something like that. And then as well for like the, for the ongoing, you know, like, if I understand this, sorry, Counselor Peterson's kind of suggestion correctly, it has to do with affordability. And there are people that can't really afford to buy a year pass outright. And this, and so, you know, it's, what I'm, what I'm kind of picturing is that we would sell somebody a year pass, but on monthly payments essentially. And, you know, maybe we charge them a ten percent premium, you know, to, for our trouble. Okay, so yeah, so they are paying, let's say, a hundred and twenty dollars a month, but they're getting that, you know, a year-long pass. And they sign a contract, you know, and it doesn't keep kind of rolling over, I guess, you know, like, unless the person wants to re-up. But I, you know, I'm interested in serving the greatest number of people to the, you know, to the greatest amount of revenue that we can attain. And, and that's, those are, yeah, that's kind of the logic behind my suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Langmead.
Thank you, your worship. Because I like making your life difficult, I'm gonna come at this from a completely opposite side of things, and I think there are too many passes. I have to tell you, when I look at the list of what we provide, and I understand wanting to provide a few different options and different ways that people can access our facilities and things like that. If I were to sit here and try and tell you today what pass I would buy, I am not sure, I would need to break out the calculator, start figuring, okay, how many times do I go to the pool? Well, I can't really skate, so I'm probably not gonna go to the arena. I, so I'm curious, from boots on the ground, what have people said about, you know, what's kind of the reception been of all of these different options? Are people excited to be able to choose between a thirty-pass or a three-month all access pass or a pool-only pass or? It just seems like a lot of options, and I'm wondering if people have been appreciating those options or if it's become a confusing decision for people.
Mark? Excuse me, through your worship, through the chair, Counselor Langmead, as I indicated, unfortunately, we don't have complete data for the year. As an example, as Marcy indicated, previously, we only had one category of all access membership, it was an annual or, and so I had council's direction, we provided some additional. And last year, you know, we had sixty-six all access memberships sold. And a portion of that, you know, is approximately thirty-three thousand dollars of our revenue, about approximately one forty-five. So, you know, we're still gathering data as for that, but, you know, as you indicated, we do have a number of memberships that only are interested in the pool or only interested in the sports center. You know, and they aren't interested in running the track or anything like that. So that's why we've, we've offered, continue to offer those facilities to try to meet the best needs of the community. But again, you know, obviously, these are council's, council's fees and things like that. We're providing some recommendation here and, and hopefully that, you know, we'll do our best to try to analyze this. And if, if council wishes, we could always finish the end of this year and look at amending these fee by law early in twenty twenty-five with some recommendations after we have some, two full years of data unimpacted by COVID together and to compare with council.
Thank you, yeah, I would be interesting, I would be interested in learning more, just because I do think the number of options we're providing, well, it is nice to, I don't want to take away all of the options and only provide one thing. There's, there's a number of options and I, I, I think it's a little bit confusing. I don't know whether I would rather buy a thirty, a thirty, a thirty punch pass or a one-month. I could go every day or I could go every day. I'm not entirely sure. You know, there's just a lot of options that kind of seem pretty similar. And then in terms of all access pass versus individual facility passes, I do think personally that we should, we should still be offering, we should continue to offer individual facility passes for the reason that not everyone uses every facility. Some families, they're a skating family and their kid wants to go skate every day of the week, and they just, they just want to go to the arena. And then you have me and my family, and I can't skate, and my husband can't skate, and we never go to the arena unless we're watching a game. So, you know, so I would appreciate not having to pay for access to the arena that I can't use because I can't skate, and I blame my parents for that. Yeah, those are just my, yeah, my, my, so to sum up, my general feedback is I think offering so many options is confusing. I would like to see a reduced number, not, not completely cut, but a reduced number. And, and I'm interested in, in that subscription-type model. Not so interested that I would maybe consider it this year, I'd want to think on it a little bit more. But it's, it's an, it's an interesting idea, and it does seem to be the, the way the world is going. And there must be a reason for that. So those are my thoughts, thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Langmead. Just before I go to Counselor Peterson, this is the only time I've, I've received any complaints, and I only received three. And the only three complaints I got was not so much the price, but the expressed, expressed concerns were the suddenness of the jump in the, in the all access family one. That's the only complaints I've ever received, and that's just, it just might be a product of us doing the increase too quickly for people to really grasp. Counselor Peterson?
So, so Mayor Feely, you reflect exactly my experience. I had eleven individuals, family people, but, but eleven families that where one individual, the family came forward and expressed that exact same thing, that it was the abruptness and the shock. They asked why. Our director gave a very fulsome response and related the reasons that led to the increase. They, they weren't happy with it, and they were particularly angry that they didn't get any notice that as families, they couldn't budget and they couldn't prepare. In the interim, in those conversations, I did tell them that I'd come back, and, and our director did everything that he possibly could to explain the rationale behind it. And while they accepted the rationale, they were still upset that they had not had any lead-in to that. But then in the course of those conversations, they also talked about being salaried families, where paying a fifteen hundred or sixteen hundred dollar cost upfront in what was, was a, an onerous burden on them. And that's when I told them that I would bring this possibility back. And having said that, there were eleven people, so I'm aware of that. I'm aware that, you know, I had no understanding of the, of data beyond that, I don't have your expertise, and I, I am highly cognizant of my ignorance in the scope and sequence of the work that you're doing. So I appreciate the mindfulness that you've brought to this, it's been an education for me, and I'm very appreciative. My questions would be that, and in the, in the interest of what you're talking about, about the increased costs that are involved in doing something like this, I appreciate that, it's reasoned. And in our, in our new IT options that we talked about in budget, will there be any, any changes to the IT processes that we're currently using? Or is this like, this is a visa option and you pay for the machine on a per, per-use basis, and that's not going to change? Can, is that probably what's going to happen?
I think when we talk about kind of the IT piece that we're talking about specifically as it relates to the twenty twenty-five budget, we're talking more long-term, right? In terms of, in terms of replacements. So I think as Marcy has astutely alluded to, our team has done the work already to investigate whether the existing software can accommodate this. But again, there are going to be additional charges, additional administrative overhead that we do think council will want to consider, and potentially, if you're going to proceed with that in terms of adding in that, that option into the fee by law, that we do recommend that you consider that as, as part of that process.
Yeah, and I would follow that up with Deputy Mayor Wiley's, you know, concerns about, about being very mindful of recovery and that that would need to be built into that overall cost. And I don't know whether, you know, that, you know, an increase from fifteen thirty-five to probably sixteen seventy-five or sixteen eighty to cover off the numbers of passes that we have that would cover off that, you know, I don't know whether a hundred and forty-five dollars more a year would, would be a make or break. I'd be really interested in following up to see if, if that understanding, you know, that you know, that, that I have no database to, to base this on, only my understanding of the fact that the pressures on, on families today have increased significantly and understanding that most of, most of our families in our community are salaried. And, and so, might this make a difference? I don't know. I have no way of knowing that, but I'd like, I'd like to try it. Or, or maybe I'd, maybe I'd like to go to the community and ask. I don't know if that's a possibility, if that's something that, that can, can, can be reasonably done without overwhelming our system. But I just want to say once again that, you know, that the people that I represent were appreciative of the fact that, that our director got back to them. And, and they understood the, the reason, and they still weren't happy with the costs. And they are looking for other options. And if there is any way we can do that, I think that would be great. And if we can't, and it's not workable in terms of financial and, and operational processes, I, I believe that, that you've done your best, and I'm appreciative of everything that you've brought to this.
Thank you, Counselor Peterson. Counselor Montgomery?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. So, like, I guess to pick up on Counselor Peterson's comments, yeah, we are, we are heading into, and have been, but heading into, you know, let's say, harder economic times for a lot of people. And I think we need, as, I'll say, you know, I'll say it again, I guess, we need to be careful about pricing ourselves out of the reach of people in our community who are looking for recreation options. There will, there will, and there has come a point, I believe already, where we will exceed the, you know, approximate value of whatever we're, people, you know, whatever people are willing to spend their money on. We're not providing that value, I believe, at the price point we're at. And I think that it will only get worse, to be honest, if we sit here and do nothing, or if we act like, you know, things are, you know, I would love, I would love for you guys to come to us for the next council, a year from now, and say, we have, you know, we, we made, you know, I, I mean, if you guys, if you guys sold 1,000 passes, okay, at 1,200 bucks each, obviously, that's 1.2 million. I, you know, can you guys do that many passes? It'd be tough, but you know, could you do several hundred passes, you know, possibly? And I would love it if you guys would come to us for the next council, next budget time, and say, hey, you know what, we are slammed. We can, you know, we are definitely providing great value for, for the money we're charging, and we should charge a bit more. Where, you know, it, it makes little sense to have underutilized facilities and to consider keeping our prices the same or even raising them, which I know we're not proposing raising them, but to even keep them the same. And I'll, I'll talk about, so Counselor Langmead, you, you raised the, the point about, well, I'll catch you a couple of points. One is that I, I actually agree about, I think that the Aquatic Center, the, and the Sports Center could be under an all-access pass. And I even, I'll, I'll include the, sorry, I'll include the arena in that as well. But the arena also should have a separate option if somebody, because it is, I mean, like, for a family annual pass for the arena, it's only a couple hundred dollars. And so obviously, somebody doesn't need to spend $1,200 to go skating for a few months of the year or something like that. But we would be, we, we would be, I think, providing better value. And, and as I said, the, the goal here should be to sell as many passes as we possibly can without increasing our overhead disproportionately. And so, that, that just means providing the best value we can for, for what we're charging. And so if we can, if we can, and I'll, I'll give you an example. So the Aquatic Center annual passes, this year are proposed to be 1117, which is 1220 with GST for families for a year. And then I think the Sports Center is, let's see here. Sports Center is also, I think it's like just under $1,200 as well. So could we reasonably charge those people that are only buying those passes? You know, the $1,200? So we would actually be increasing, you know, whatever those people are, are, you know, those people that are buying those passes. You know, we could charge them a bit more because we actually are, you know, turning around and providing them a better value, you know, even if they say at the time, I only want a swim pass. It's like, well, you know, yeah, I guess what, we're already undercharging you and, and, you know, here's some better value. With regards to the number of passes, like, you know, the 10-pass, the 30-pass, the one-month pass. So I, for instance, I buy my kids a 30-pass for the pool. And I don't buy a one-month pass because I don't know, you know, when we'll be able to go swimming or, you know, how often. Maybe I'll have, you know, two kids there, maybe I'll have three kids, maybe I'll even have, you know, my kids and, and, you know, a couple of their friends. So it, it gives me a lot more flexibility to be able to buy a 30-pass than it does a one-month pass, even though I'm spending a bit more money for that flexibility. So, and, and it's not like it's that, you know, it, it's not like we need 18 extra staff members or something like that to kind of keep track of all the various, you know, possible passes that people can buy. Like, I see seven categories here in front of me. And, you know, and if somebody can, if one of those fits, you know, well for somebody, you know, let's say somebody, like I said, wants to buy a one-month pass, you know, and, and they, none of the other options fits for them. You know, isn't it better that we get that $100 or whatever we're going to charge them for that pass rather than, you know, saying, you know, just kind of foregoing and going, well, you know, it's too bad. We don't really want to kind of, you know, meet you in the middle or something like that.
I'm wondering if I could get CIO Scoble to weigh in here.
So this is not very clear to administration. I would have to understand what value is. You've set a number of, say, $1,200. So we know what our total costs per year are to operate these facilities. So to set the rates, that means we need to understand what level of cost recovery you want, what level of tax ratio you want. Do you want to change the mill rate on the businesses to lessen the subsidization? Like, there's many moving parts here. To get to $1,200 with the existing parameters, are you asking me to cut staff? Are you asking me to reduce programming? What is your definition of value? Administration would need to understand that to do this work.
So I guess, like, I, and this is what I, I had, I believe, was borne out with the, the report on the revenue and the number of passes. There isn't really a direct correlation between what we charge and the revenue. Because we can, we could charge a million dollars a pass, and that doesn't mean we're going to see one pass sold. We could charge a dollar a pass and maybe sell 10,000 passes. So, yeah, I, I'm not sure, like, like, it seems like you guys, and correct me if I'm wrong, but you guys are basically just kind of making the, the revenue based on whatever.
I think you have to be. I've just said that we know our total costs, and we have to recover those costs 100%, whether that's through whatever degree of subsidization and whatever degree of fees we charge. So, again, you need to define value. You're asking administration to provide something ambiguous at this point. Explain to us what value is, and if you would like to see us reduce costs. You've talked about increasing revenues other ways. We've looked at many different ways of increasing revenues, and we undertake many different ways of increasing revenues. So please define what value is, like, what do you want for 1,200 bucks?
I want exactly what we're providing right now. But if you'll, if you'll listen to me for a second. So unless you guys are going to guarantee the revenue, okay, if you say, you know, set it at $1,500 and we'll guarantee this much revenue, fine, that's, you know, I'll let you do that, okay? But if you say, let's set it at $1,500, and our revenue gets cut in half from what it was the year before because nobody wants to buy the passes, we'll end up subsidizing it a lot more than we are now. So that's what I'm saying. I'm saying we need to make sure that we're aligning our price with what people want to pay for what we're providing. Otherwise, we're going to lose more money than if we just charged, you know, a bit less money. So I'm saying we need to dial in our prices and not just say, okay, well, you know, if we, if we raise our prices by 50% like we did last year, we can expect 50% more revenue, because that's just not true. We actually got less revenue by increasing our prices 50%. So I'm saying that we obviously are not providing the value that people want for the price that we're charging, which is why we're making less money than we did the previous years. So we need to relook at our prices, keep providing what we're providing, and we can probably actually expect more, I believe, we'll, we can see more revenue by charging less money because people will actually want to pay because we'll be more in line with value. What is value? It's things that you get for, for money, I guess, things that you want in return for whatever you're providing to somebody. So right now, we're not meeting that expectation, I guess, of people the way we were in previous years, which is why our revenue has gone down.
CIO Scoble?
Okay, but again, so we have labor rates, which are comparable to the Calgary region. We are typically in the Calgary region, so our rates are similar. We pay gas and electricity costs, which are similar to other municipalities. We have chemical costs, which we probably pay more for because we're a smaller user and we don't get the same volume discounts that larger communities do. So we have all these costs. So where would you like me to reduce costs to get $1,200 of value? Because that's what we're going to have to do.
I don't want you to reduce costs. I want you to increase revenues by selling more passes.
Would you like me, so how would you suggest we sell more passes?
By lowering the price.
So then, if we don't sell more passes, then is this council prepared to subsidize more through cost recovery?
We are subsidizing more this year after increasing prices by 50%. So I would say that.
Are you focusing just on the, when you say 50%, are you just focusing on the all-season access? All, all-access family pass?
Well, that's, that's the one I, I'm referring to, yeah.
That's the only one you're, you're referring to?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, that's.
But Your Worship, the.
But that was one of the questions I asked Mark, and he was saying the data is not here yet for the rest of this, for the rest of this year, that there are often many all-access passes purchased for the next year.
Well, and, and you know, to Counselor Wiley's point, I would actually love to see, I would love to see a report, you know, annually that shows, hey, you know, here's what we made on revenue for all these various passes. Because as I mentioned before, we are basically shooting in the dark if we just change the fees without actually knowing how that's actually affected year-over-year, the number of passes we're selling. And like, you know, we can, we can lower the price to whatever or increase the price to whatever, but if we don't know how it's changing year-over-year and, and kind of base our decisions based on that, then we're shooting in the dark.
But this was a two-year program that we haven't finished yet, is my understanding. Is that correct?
Yes, CIO Scoble, this, we, the all-access pass has been in, been in existence for a couple of years. Obviously, COVID has impacted that. We've made some changes to the all-access pass with an increase for 2024 to recognize that we're not comparable with other municipalities, but also, as Marcy indicated, bring us in line with our overall fee approach. Unfortunately, this is the one fee that was outstanding and needed to catch up.
I guess my comment is we collect some data and then we make a change, and then we collect some more data and we make another change. Like, we've never actually understood. I appreciate what Counselor Montgomery's saying, but we're changing every year, so we can't really develop any basis. And I guess my other comment would be, is we can look at this, but this cannot be done for this budget cycle at this point in time. And we just can't do it, that kind of change to the budget now, this late in the process.
Well, that's very good direction for us, too, as we look to the 2025 budget talks.
Could I ask, like, what is our expected revenue for passes? Like, what are we, what are we budgeting for passes, actually, that we're expecting for revenue?
Mark?
Through the, through the chair, Your Worship, I'll have to open up some software in order to do that. So if I could respond tomorrow with that details, we, as to what we budget for, for each facility for membership, it'd be a membership and admissions revenue.
Yeah, yeah, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Counselor Langmead?
Thank you, Your Worship. CIO Scoble kind of took the words out of my mouth, but I, I'm going to say it again because I think it's worth repeating. It is really hard to make decisions when we change, change, when we change prices all the time. We're not getting good data to actually make decisions on. The data we, we had a couple of years ago was COVID, which we all know was just weird. And, and the more and more we change these, the less reliable data we're, we're going to have to actually make these decisions. And in terms of making the decisions, I, I said this earlier tonight, and I'm just going to repeat it again. I'm really not terribly interested in, in debating each individual pass cost, whether it's going to be for just the, the arena or the, that's getting really, really, really into the weeds for me. And, and I.
If I could add, could I add something? We don't, I don't think any of us on council have any training in, in recreation facility management either. So, yeah, I think we have to be very careful what we get into.
Yeah, and in, in terms of, Counselor Montgomery referred to, you know, I'd like, he'd like to see the numbers of passes we're getting and a report on that. I actually don't want to see that. I want you to see it. I, I want administration to have that information, to have the opportunity to look at it. And I have every, every belief that you do do that. I know that that's a part of this process, is that you look and see, oh, hey, we didn't sell any, any of this this year. What, what do we need to maybe, maybe adjust? And, and that's work for you guys to do. That's not work for me to do here behind the table, is to look at that data and try and interpret it and, and spit out an answer. That's, yeah, I, I don't want to see that data. I want, I, I trust that you have that data and you're using that to bring us the best possible scenario of what we can offer our residents. And, and while, yes, you know, in, in a vacuum, sure, you could argue that maybe $1,200 might sell more all-access passes and it might not, but that doesn't actually take into account the actual demand is for all-access passes despite, despite the price. I mean, some people just won't want an all-access pass. I don't, I can't skate. You know, and, and there are other things that, that contribute. It, it's a lot, it's a much more complex calculation than just reduce costs, sell more passes. You know, we have the economy going on where people are, people are struggling. Mortgages are coming up for renewal and rates are declining, but still high. And that's going to be impacting people. There's a, there's a much larger context to, to this, to this discussion and how it's going to influence all of the, all of these different revenues and expenses. And it, it's not something that I feel is, is in, I don't feel it's in residents' best interests for me to try and make those decisions. Specific to each individual cost. I think it's in residents' best interests that, that we have staff that can look at this and spend the time analyzing the data and making, making the best possible recommendation. And I, I have no reason to believe that administration hasn't brought forward the best possible recommendation. Thank you.
Counselor Peterson?
I just want to say again that, that, you know, we're talking about cost recovery and, and fee structure. And this, you know, it, it impacts all of our strategic planning. It affects affordable living, it affects financial stability, intentional community development and community wellness. It affects four of our strategic priorities. And so I really think that where this belongs is in the next go that we have in our strategic plan. We have one year left in that 2022 to 2025 strategic plan, and that's where it belongs. And at that point in time, we have both the time and the capacity to build intentional and mindful measures into that process through, through our expertise of our senior leadership team. And I, I really do think that, that it belongs at the strategic planning level. expertise of our senior leadership team. And I I really do think that that it belongs at the strategic planning level.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you, Marcy. Thank you, Riley.
You're you're not off the hook with me yet on this, but so I just kind of want to make sure I understand the direction from council on it. So kind of what I was hearing in terms of consensus and like CAO Scoville said, in terms of the rates that are in front of you, are you happy with proceeding with this in the bylaw next week? And like Mark said, if we want to make amendments in the future, once we've had more time to digest some of the asks, we can bring back an amendment on that in the new year to anything specific to all access pass, other fees, things like that. That's kind of the way I would recommend. We go just, like Kevin said, we are getting quite late in the budget cycle, so I I would kind of recommend we go that way, but I do want direction from council on that, please.
I would think that we're, we know that the budget process is coming to the end and that we're in, we're in for some intense meetings to wrap things up. So, yeah, I would say that I think that's where we're headed. We're, we've been big on cost recovery and being fiscally responsible.
I I would actually like, I I would like to see my all access pass idea, the twelve hundred dollar annual with prorated, you know, months with like some sort of premium, like, let's say, ten percent. An annual contracted price that, you know, is the annual price plus ten percent. Let's say they can be paid monthly. And and if if council has no appetite and wants to vote it down, that's totally fine. I get it. But I just want to have, like, this as an option to be discussed. Thank you. And I also, if I if I could, yeah, if I could get that info on the, but what we're expecting for revenues for the upcoming year, that'd be great.
So you're you're feeling that you still want to have that done, even though.
He'd bring it forward as a motion.
You could bring, yeah, bring it forward as a motion in our next meeting.
Yeah, just for discussion. I mean, like, and I mean, I'm going to throw it out there and, you know, let the chips fall where they may, I guess.
Yep. Councillor Langmead?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. It it would be councillor Montgomery's prerogative to bring it forward as a motion, but in terms of expending resources of our administration, I'm not, I I recognize the amount of work that that would take and 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 what it would mean to have to readjust everything, considering that everything is based off of one starting number, and that would create a, it would create a domino effect where you're essentially rebuilding the entire pricing structure of our recreation passes just to accommodate that one change. And and I don't think that that's it's certainly not something that I'm interested in pursuing. And in terms of expending administration's resources at a time when things are already very busy, it it's not something that I would like to see.
If I could add to your comment.
However, we can discuss, we can absolutely discuss it at the next meeting. I just don't want to waste your time.
Yeah, no, I agree with that. I just gonna, I was just gonna review or go back to when we had our council training on motions, and the motions belong to the council, so rather than rather than wait to the twentieth, when we'll have a budget meeting on the nineteenth in the evening. Councillor Montgomery, you could put a motion on the floor tonight, and we could discuss and vote on it.
Your worship, this is committee of the whole.
All right, we're in committee of the whole. I keep thinking we can rise and report. Now, I just remember when he used to rise and report. Okay, how does that affect our administration with our budget meeting on the nineteenth and the next council meeting on the twentieth? Does that put you guys in in a, in a tough situation or?
So the motion could be made on the nineteenth. It's a budget motion, right? You're allowed to make motions during those, and then they they get considered at later, later in the budget process.
Okay, thank you. So that, did you hear that all, councillor Montgomery? You could, you can bring your motion to the November nineteenth meeting?
Yeah, and and if administration, I mean, like, you know, if it's, it's, if it's seen as kind of onerous, I mean, like, I can certainly put together a spreadsheet myself with the figures. I think it's I'm I'm not too worried about that. So whatever, whatever administration prefers.
Okay, councillor Langmead?
Thank you, your worship. Please don't bring your own spreadsheet, councillor Montgomery. Oh, good, goodness gracious. Sorry, I was totally thrown off by that. I I actually Riley, you had mentioned at the beginning of your presentation that we might have an opportunity to ask a a different question about the fee schedule and and what's in front of us. I think we've kind of beat recreation passes to death tonight. And if it's all right with council, I'd like to ask a an unrelated question. I've been thinking about a, the, when I, the proposed one and a half percent service fee on on credit card charges. And I have to admit, I well, I don't really like it. I do see that it is, it is happening everywhere. And and I do understand that, you know, it's it's recovering a cost that the that the town is already paying. I I guess what my question comes down to is how, how will we communicate, be communicating that change to residents? And what kind, is there a a rollout period where, you know, maybe maybe can we include instructions in your utility bill on how you can transfer from charging things to your credit card to here's how you can set up your payments through online banking, so you don't have to pay this one, one and a half percent fee if you don't want to? Do we have an opportunity to communicate that? What does that look like?
Yeah, absolutely. It will be a very large change to residents who choose to use it. And we will kind of discuss that as an administration on like, as soon as the bylaws passed, basically, like, what the strategy is for communicating that to residents. A big thing we'll do at, like, point of sale as well is, like, informing residents, if you're paying with credit card, there's a fee, debit card, no fee, kind of thing, just like you see when you're at a small business kind of thing. They'll often let you know if you're paying with a credit card, if there's a charge on it, kind of thing. So it will be a really top of mind for us, for sure.
Perfect, yeah. Things that are on my mind and what I'd kind of like to see is one, is one, yeah, instructions on in your utility bill, you can be like, here's how you can set up your online banking, because I I went and learned how to do that today. Communication through our utility bills would be great on that. And then, yeah, like signs, signs at the, maybe, maybe signs at points of payment, just to remind people that maybe don't open their utility bill newsletters. Or, you know, just the more communication we can do. And then, yeah, just the the idea of maybe a bit of a a slight buffer in the rollout, just between when it's decided and and giving that opportunity for residents to learn about the change, understand it, and perhaps alter, alter their payment plans if if they want to.
Jonathan?
Thank you, your worship and council. Thank you for that question, councillor Langmead. As Riley said, I think there's going to be more conversations internally, just to make sure that we do hit all those user groups and get all those residents. And speaking with the communications team, I can, I can say that we are looking at having posters put up at all of our facilities to make sure it's clearly advertised. And we'll look into other means as well to make sure the message gets across. One of the things that we've kind of talked about, too, with just the timelines of getting this fees bylaw passed potentially next week, we wouldn't be able to include it in the December utility insert, or if we did, it'd be very close. So that'd just be one of those touchpoints that we would have to kind of figure out.
And maybe just to kind of build on what John said, I mean, I think it's important to note that if if the fees bylaw is approved, it will be effective as of January one. So if you're looking for a delayed start, we could certainly build that in. We would just need to know when specifically you would like that, just so that, again, because that's, that's where we get the ultimate authority, is that being specified in the bylaw.
Absolutely. And and knowing it doesn't start till January one, that that's, that seems like an appropriate little buffer for me. It it was just the idea that it's not going to change the day, you know, the day after it's signed, all of a sudden, everyone and no one knows. And and honestly, I I probably didn't even need to, I know I didn't even really need to say anything, because our communications team is, it's honestly really awesome, and I knew you guys would be on it, but you know me, I just have to say it. So thank you very much. I appreciate your answers and 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 the work you're doing on this.
Riley? Anymore?
No, that's all I had. Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thank you. So we may need a motion to extend the meeting. I'm not sure how long we'll need in camera. Councillor Peterson?
Your worship, at this time, I'd like to move that we extend our meeting, our meetings usually go till ten thirty, right? So we should extend it to ten forty five? No, we do not.
All right, there's a motion on the floor to extend the meeting to ten forty five PM. All in favor?
How can we do a motion in committee of the whole?
Good point.
We could just end committee of the whole, I guess, and then do it.
Ledger Services, could you help, could you help us on that one? Because, yeah, that's, I don't know how to do that. That's true.
Yeah, I think you're, you're worshiping council. It is a procedural item. Similar, we do have some motions listed out in our procedure bylaw. One of the motions that's not listed up like council does is every committee of the whole is confirming the agenda. Having said that, usually this section of the bylaw is specific to regular council meetings, and we have also included this in committee of the whole, just for, I think, expectations for everybody, for the public online and and for each councillor. So ultimately, it'd be up to the committee here if you would like to entertain that motion.
But it does say in eighteen point one, council may make a motion to extend a meeting past ten PM. I agree that it's committee of the whole, but this is procedural, councillor Langmead?
Yeah, let's, let's do it. Just call the question.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't think there's any harm in us just doing it so that everyone can have an opportunity to say if they want to or not.
All in favor? Are you in favor or opposed? Opposed? So everyone's in favor? Okay. That brings us to question and answer period. I just have a question regarding letters of support. I received one just before the meeting tonight. I have two requests for a letter of support from the mayor in town. One is for the horseshoe pit expansion, so that he can apply for a grant. And the other one is for the, I believe it's U eleven Girls Fastball Provincial, so that they can put it in their bid package to host it. Is council okay with those?
Yeah, I think, I think we just follow our regular procedure and have have administration draft up the letters of support and distribute them to council and
And Jonathan, I can finalize what they are for you or Kara tomorrow. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or answers? Councillor Peterson?
Your worship, regarding letters, I I have, I have a a request, and and that is, we received a communication today from Alberta, Alberta Muni about the action that they'd taken on previous resolutions that the town of Strathmore had brought forward from their chair, Dan Rude, and I thought it would be good to send them a letter thanking them for their work on our behalf. If if that was okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Then I will entertain a motion, actually, a motion to go in camera again. Councillor Langmead?
Thank you, your worship. I move that council go in camera at ten fifty, nine fifty eight PM to discuss items under, related to section twenty four one A of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act.
Thank you. All in favor? That motion is carried. We're going in camera.